At the twilight's last green, o' stars shine and bright stars through the perilous night. All the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rockets burned there, the lots bursting in air. It grew through the night, and our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star sang, no, never yet wailing? For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. I would like to, please, I'd like to offer a moment of silence for the people of Joplin, Miss Missouri, who were hit by that tornado last night. Thank you. Tonight, we're going to start with thirty-nine.
That was twelve seconds.
I pray fast. Yeah. I pray fast. Tonight, we're going to start with thirty-nine, which is basically a lot like thirty-eight with one or two little differences. So if it was said once before, moderate your discussions, and if you have something new to add, but I can't take lists yet. If you have something new to add, then by all means. Otherwise, you're just going to get up and say the same thing. Maybe we can move it through, and if possible, we could possibly finish up everything except the budgets and the other things that are going to be table till after their override. Are there any town meeting members who have yet to be sworn in? None. I recognize Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Ms. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was hoping you may skip this. If it is moved that if all business of the meeting is set forth in the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of in this session, the meeting adjourns to Wednesday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven, at eight p.m.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're going to come back Wednesday. Any announcements or resolutions? Mr. McCabe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Harry McCabe, Precinct Twenty-One. Mr. Moderator, the Council on Aging would like to invite all of you to a health fair on Saturday, June eighteenth, at twelve-thirty. Admission is free in this hall. I've left copies of this for everyone on the back table there, and if you can't come, please send a neighbor or a member of the family. I think you'll be surprised. Thank you.
Any other announcements or resolutions? Seeing none, any reports or committees? No committee reports. Okay, then we're going to go right into thirty-nine. The next on our list was Mr. John Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm from Precinct Eight. I'd like to move an amendment to the motion of the Board of Selectmen, and I will hand it to you now. Excuse me. And the amendment, which is on the screen, very large type, even I can see it. No, that's for thirty-eight. We want thirty-nine in maybe slightly smaller type. Anyway, basically, this is identical to the motion that I made under Article thirty-eight, which inserts some language into the selectman's motion, which shall be conveyed by deed, which, and after word use, the words for at least thirty years. And we have that. Who's in charge here? I don't know. Maybe we'll get to it. Anyway, and there are some paper copies at the back of the hall. We ran off quite a large number of them, and there are quite a few left, so feel free. Excuse me. As in the case of Article thirty-eight, I do not favor the sale of the Crosby School, but if you do vote by two-thirds to sell it, the sale should be restricted so as to provide some protection to the neighborhood, a neighborhood that has already been threatened by forty-B development on the other side of Winter Street. The other night, it was asserted that I am against affordable housing, and that's why I put this restriction in, even though all my amendment would do is put some much-needed teeth into the motion put forward by the Board of Selectmen. Arlington already has affordable housing programs, provide such housing without overriding our zoning law, bylaw protections, and they provide housing which is affordable for people who really need it. The housing authorities' buildings, the Housing Corporation of Arlington's program of purchasing and rehabbing existing housing stock, and the inclusionary zoning bylaw enacted by this town meeting, which requires fifteen percent of any development of six or more units must be available to people at sixty percent of median income. And this is an important distinction, because forty-B projects, you have to have at least eighty percent of median. If you want to accuse someone of being against affordable housing, take a look at Article thirteen in your warrant. Fortunately, voted no action in the earlier session of this meeting, which would have eviscerated our inclusionary zoning bylaw. Some people have been duped into believing that forty-B is synonymous with affordable housing, the result of a one-million-dollar developer-finance campaign against question two on last November's ballot, which would have repealed forty-B. One million dollars seems like a lot of money, but it's only one percent of the one-hundred million dollars in illicit profits made by forty-B developers over the past few years, according to the Inspector General, which, by the way, includes five-hundred thousand dollars of excess profits on the forty-B on Brattle Street, which was supposed to come to the town of Arlington, but we never got the money. The First Amendment, this is going back, was circulated, that I proposed would have dealt with this threat by requiring a reversion of the Crosby School property to the town if any subsequent owner tried to go the forty-B route. I did not put forward that amendment. A reversion for violation of a provision in a properly drafted deed is perfectly legal and was recently upheld by the court in a case decided in Barnstable County. I abandoned that proposed amendment when I saw it as a selectman seemed to be moving in somewhat the right direction. Now listen carefully to this quote. Because Arlington has less than ten percent affordable housing, state law, so-called forty-B, would allow a developer to pack in residential units, ignoring local zoning restrictions on height and density, so long as he makes twenty-five percent available as affordable housing. The town would be powerless to prevent this gross overbuilding from happening. Now, that isn't John Warden speaking. That's the Arlington Board of Selectmen in the same document that I referred to the other night, in connection with promoting the debt exclusion for the Sims Project. When someone stands on the floor of this meeting and says she isn't in favor of forty-B, but just a few months ago, in the run-up to the November election, signed on as a supporter of the No-on-two campaign, that is, as a supporter of the corrupt forty-B law in published advertisements, is she trying to kid us, or, like the warrant closing date, did she just forget? When the Board of Selectmen and their supporters tell us they don't like my thirty-year restriction to educational uses because they need flexibility, I get nervous. Ms. LaCourte stated that no change in use would occur unless, quote, "the owner, the Board of Selectmen, and the community as a whole agree." How does she, who has promised to leave the board next year, propose to determine what the whole community wants? Here are some options. Hold a hearing at which all comments are heard, and then the board does what they were going to do anyway. Hold a monster meeting in this hall, which both sides would try to pack, and then take a straw vote? No. The only way to determine what the whole community wants is to put the question on the ballot or to consult this town meeting. So if they want flexibility, let someone move to amend my amendment by adding, "This restriction may be modified by two-thirds vote of town meeting." Simple as that. The purpose of my amendment, something we owe to the residents of the Crosby neighborhood, is to ensure that, in the event of any subsequent sale of this property, they will be limited to educational use because it would be right there in the deed. We have already protected the perimeter neighborhood, and thank you for doing that, by keeping the school as town property. The people in the Crosby neighborhood deserve no less. So if you're in favor of selling the Crosby School, please vote for my amendment to give the neighborhood the protection they deserve. If you're against selling, as I am, please vote for my amendment in case the other side wins. At least the neighborhood will have some level of protection. And then, most importantly, vote no on the final vote on Article thirty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCabe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Harry McCabe, Precinct Twenty-One. I don't think we need to beat you to death again over this article. I think it's the same issue that we discussed in a previous article. The important thing we need to remember is, the most important thing, that the rebuild of the Thompson School has nothing to do with this. Nothing. Zero. A previous speaker, under Article thirty-eight, made a good case for maintaining our options. Well, if we sell this property, we have no options. So I don't understand the particular person's logic, and I'm not attacking him personally. I just don't understand the logic. The way to maintain our options is to maintain ownership of this property. So as I said, I don't intend to beat you to death over this. You very wisely voted no on Article thirty-eight, and I recommend the same and strongly that you vote no on Article thirty-nine. You're going to hear arguments that attempt to convince us that Article thirty-nine is different. Well, in some sense, in some respects, it is different. But the bottom line is not different. The bottom line is the same. If we sell this property, it's gone forever. So with that, I would thank you very much for your courtesy and apologize to anybody who may have been upset over any remarks that I may have made under Article thirty-eight. There was no intention to malign anybody. I believe everybody has been acting in good faith here, and I believe that we need to respect everybody's opinion. Everybody's. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Doja.
Good evening. Joyce Radoja, Precinct Eleven. I was just going to come and stand before you and say hello. I would like to ask permission for Dr. Ted Wilson, who is president of Schools for Children, of which Dearborn Academy is a program. I think Dr. Wilson can speak for himself, but I do want to say maybe twenty seconds' worth of what's going on in my mind. I have worked at Dearborn Academy for twenty-three years. I have owned property on Winter Street for forty-five years. I have a daughter, son-in-law, and a two-year-old granddaughter who live on Winter Street. And right now, I am thinking not in terms of just money, and I know I should. My husband scolds me that I don't always put money first. I am thinking of the long-term stability of a neighborhood. A school really adds that extra-special something to a neighborhood. We live up the street from Bishop School, even though sometimes the traffic when school gets out can be challenging. It's still a wonderful place to live near a school. And I think you have heard various times, various locations, that the neighbors on Oxford and Winter Street love Dearborn Academy and love them as neighbors. Now, I would like to again ask permission for Dr. Ted Wilson to make his case for staying, either through the sale of the building, through the purchase of the building, or through some kind of a favorable lease.
Is Dr. Wilson a resident of the town? Does he live in Arlington?
No, he lives in Winchester.
Okay, so we have to ask the meeting. All in favor of having Dr. Wilson address the meeting, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? Dr. Wilson, come on in.
Mr. Moderator and town meeting members, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Ted Wilson, President and Executive Director of Schools for Children, and I want to just take a few minutes to talk about Article thirty-nine, not with an attempt to sway anybody's vote on anything, but to tell you what it means to us. The result of what you'll be deliberating has, I believe, a direct and major impact on the services we provide to our students. We're an Arlington-based nonprofit dedicated to serving a wide range of students with a variety of high-quality educational programs. We currently operate out of three old school buildings leased to us by the town of Arlington. Since nineteen-eighty-three, we've been renting the entire Crosby Building for our highly-regarded special education school, Dearborn Academy. We also rent a significant amount of space in the Gibbs Building for the Leslie Ellis School. In addition, we rent space in the Central School for administrative offices and a small diagnostic program. In total, we rent over sixty thousand square feet from the town of Arlington. We are one of the largest private employers in town with one hundred and fifty employees, serving over three hundred students from over forty communities. Our economic impact within Arlington is significant, and we very much want to continue operating here. As you begin to discuss this article, it's important for me to be clear on one key point. We would support any article that paves the way for the town to make a permanent decision on the future of the Crosby Building and gives us the best chance to compete successfully to buy the building. Schools for Children, our main goal at this point is to find permanent facilities for both of our Arlington-based schools. That's a key part of our overall long-term plan, because without such homes, our schools essentially are vulnerable to the vicissitudes of the rental life. That would be a major disruption for us and a significant loss for the town as well if we were to have to move. We believe our presence provides a direct economic benefit of the town, enhances property values, and adds to the desirability of living in Arlington. So our strong preference is to purchase the building. Why is that our preference? Simply put, it's taken our organization twenty years to mature to a point where we actually have the resources where we could complete such a step. And it's very important for us that we change the feeling of vulnerability and instability that comes from being a tenant rather than an owner. This has never been more of an issue than over the past three years. Our school is licensed by the state and has a tuition set by the Commonwealth. It's been in flux since two thousand and eight. We went from having long-term leases and predictable rent increases tied to the CPI to a very unnerving and unpredictable situation. Let me describe what happened. We've operated on a series of five- and ten-year leases since nineteen-eighty-three. Our last ten-year lease was due to expire at the end of June two thousand and eight. In December of two thousand and seven, six months before the end of that lease, the town published the RFP seeking a tenant for the Crosby. It offered a three-year lease and included target rental rates. Six months before our lease was to end, in other words, when there was no time to consider looking elsewhere, we learned that the only acceptable response to the RFP was one where we agreed to a minimum of a fifty-two-point-eight percent rent increase, or preferred doubling of that same rent over the three-year term. It kind of took our, took our, took ours by surprise, to say the least. There was really no way that we could find, acquire, and equip a new specialized school and move before the end of that lease. So essentially, we were kind of stuck in submitting a response that met that minimum term. We agreed to sign a lease with that fifty-two-point-eight percent increase, and we signed that lease twelve days before the last lease was due to run out. We also immediately began seeking alternatives to remaining at the Crosby. The fact that we're still here reflects our ongoing hope that somehow we'll have a chance to remain at the Crosby on a much more permanent basis. But we obviously can't afford to just sit and wait. In fact, two years ago, we entered a bid to buy another building in another town and would have moved had the bid been accepted. We've recently hired outside help in the search for alternatives, even while remaining very clear that our first preference is to buy the Crosby and stay in Arlington. From what I heard last week in the perimeter discussion, our future in the Crosby Building could be very much in doubt, and we should be aggressively trying to find a new space. Those are my observations from last week's town meeting. I heard that there were suggestions that this building is a pot of gold, and that the town should just ratchet up the rent and add the cost of all capital improvements to the tenant's cost. You can certainly do that, but Dearborn Academy can barely afford the current rent. It's highly unlikely that we'd sign any extension that includes rent increases beyond the CPI. You should know that Dearborn is working with some of the most challenging students in the Commonwealth, that their faculty is earning twenty-five to thirty percent less than their public school counterparts, and that they have no option to raise their tuition without Commonwealth approval. Indeed, their tuition has been frozen for the past three years. We're definitely not going to be in a position to sign any lease that both raises the rent dramatically and includes an expectation that we fund all future capital improvements for this one-hundred-and-fifteen-year-old building. Maybe there's a group out there who would agree to do this, but I have to be very clear that it simply can't be our organization. While your responsibility is to manage this building to the maximum benefit to the town of Arlington, my responsibility is to provide within our means a stable learning environment for these kids. The second point, and very much related to the first, I heard only a limited awareness of the magnitude of the capital needs facing any occupancy of the Crosby. Just a few bits of what I know, having lived there for the past twenty-eight years. We know that exterior bricks are falling out of the walls, allowing water to erode the structure. We know the roof leaks on a regular basis. The steam pipes buried beneath the floors rupture frequently, and the heating system is barely functional. Not satisfied to simply use our own experience as a guide, we hired an architectural firm to do a complete infrastructure review. We have a very clear sense of what to expect going forward, and their preliminary results have expanded on the above list. The building has significant accessibility issues and could easily require an elevator to be installed. This would be a huge concern for anybody coming into the building. There are issues with the electrical and fire alarm systems, and the HVA system, to quote the architect, "does not meet current ventilation requirements for habitation." I don't want to tell that to my staff. List goes on, but you get the point. Whoever owns this building must anticipate spending significant dollars in the years to come. Third, many figures are being used to justify the arguments for either selling the building or continuing to lease it. Some very smart people are debating these two points of view. From my perspective, both sides of the debate are offering arguments using best guesses about market rent rates and market values to justify their particular point of view. I think the reality in this building is that it's been offered to the rental market several times over the past quarter century, and the market has responded. We've been the only bidders for almost three decades. Obviously, this could change this time around, but you won't really know until the property is offered, either for sale or for rent. We do know, however, that in the current economic times, it's dangerous to make assumptions about the market. Yet, we're being, these assumptions are being made, and I think they're driving the debates. Three key assumptions that I've heard. Number one, that the town will be able to easily and quickly identify a tenant who is both willing and able to pay an escalating rent of as much as ten percent per year for the next ten years, and be responsible for all capital improvements for the next twenty to thirty years. I've already clearly stated that this will be necessarily someone other than your current tenant, as that approach will absolutely price us out of this market. Second assumption-
Doctor, you almost done?
I am, yep, within a page. Thank you.
Okay.
That financial projections based on the proposed long-term rental scenarios are immune to the possibility of any downside risk. Graphs and spreadsheets look very different, with no revenue entering the picture for any time the building stands empty. Surely, the Sims Project provides ample warning of the need to consider risk in any analysis. Final assumption, that there are numerous entities willing, interested, and able to make bona fide offers to purchase the building under the restrictions cited in the warrant article and within the timeframe desirable to the town of Arlington. The hope is that such competition will drive the price to desirable levels. That may or may not be possible. Nobody knows who will emerge in response to an RFP to buy or lease the building. Charter schools and forty-B developers were but two that were mentioned last week. You simply don't know who will respond when that door is opened. So in conclusion, I can offer two facts to ways you consider your options. The current Crosby tenant, which occupies one hundred percent of that building, is ready, willing, and able to cement a permanent relationship with the town of Arlington by purchasing the building. If you're concerned about the long-range future of the current school in place of the Crosby, you might remember that I've already said that we have two schools needing permanent homes. The Crosby would work well for either of them. Selling to us makes it extremely unlikely you would ever have to deal with the reuse restrictions noted in the substitute article. Second, we have no issue with the restrictions contained in the selectman's substitute-
Yeah, Doc, come on. You have to finish up. Just sum up, please.
The final summary, we very much want to have all of our operations remain in Arlington. We'd be a tenant or an owner that would create a win-win solution for the neighborhood, the schools, and the town. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Berger? I let him go on because I thought he was almost done.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric Berger, Precinct Six. I'm going to urge you to vote for a substitute motion that I have put out today for Article thirty-nine for the following reasons. You might think that this is inconsistent with the position I took in Article thirty-nine right there, but the commonality is that I think and believe we need to honor the tenant of both schools and- And not to shortchange the town, but to honor the tenant. And that was true in Article thirty-eight, and it's true in Article thirty-nine. And so I'm urging you to support my motion for the following reasons. As stated, the Dearborn Academy has been an outstanding tenant and steward in this town with a Crosby School Building for twenty-eight years. It's invested over half a million dollars since nineteen eighty-three in necessary capital improvements to the building's interior. To name but a few, these include a hardwood gym floor, expansion in the school kitchen, and adding lifts, much in the building to make it handicapped accessible. Furthermore, the academy has agreed to in the past, and currently is under a lease, that has a triple-yearnet basis clause. Therefore, not only does the Dearborn Academy right now assume responsibility for the cost of heating, electricity, and water, it has also been willing to be responsible for the cost of maintaining the building, an issue that was brought up last week at the meeting, and adjacent yard divots. Furthermore, the academy has invested in exterior brick and stone repairs. The second reason is that you heard tonight, the Dearborn Academy has established an excellent relationship with its neighbors, particularly on Oxburg and Winter Streets, two streets in the communities around the community. It's also helped beautify the area by planting shrubs to reuse itself. Three, Dearborn Academy enjoys a first-rate reputation. For a long time, it was an educational institution for children with special needs. It has very small class sizes, a highly individualized instructional approach, and a comprehensive curriculum. And as such, the Dearborn Academy provides a valuable knowledge resource for our own public schools, as they seek the best ways to educate children of all ages of special needs in the district. The more you can educate special education children in a variety of options in your own district, the less costly it is. The Dearborn Academy supports the Arlington Public Schools' effort to do all it can to educate locally its special education population, so they don't have to be sent away.
Mr. Berger?
Yes?
I'm going to ask you to move to one of the other mics. That one's not going out over to TV land. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So partnering with the Dearborn Academy to create more options within its special education programming milieu can help keep more children in our home environment, which could reduce costs. Such partnering doesn't simply mean sending the students to the Dearborn Academy. These students could be educated in the Arlington Public School Buildings through partnership with the Dearborn Academy. And that partnership is going to be made a lot more difficult if the Dearborn Academy leaves and goes somewhere else. As you heard, Dearborn Academy is part of the Schools for Children Organization, with Leslie Ellis School as the other one. Now, you heard tonight, they want to remain in Arlington. They want to stay here. However, the organization you've heard has reached an evolutionary point where the stability afforded by owning the Crosby School Building in an agreement that's acceptable to the town, of course, is vitally needed for the continued health and upward trajectory of the organization. This organization has saved enough resources to make a very serious and financially sound proposal. Of course, it has to be acceptable to the town, but they're prepared to make it. They have the money to make it. Now, if there is serious competition to buy the Crosby School Building, my substitute motion honors the excellence of the long tenancy of the Dearborn Academy in that building by giving the Schools for Children Organization the opportunity or the right of first refusal. In that way, the Schools for Children Organization could match or beat someone else's best offer. And I think that's the least you can do for an organization that's been in town for twenty-eight years. I mean, they have -- you heard how many employees they have. They've been, you know, they've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars locally to our businesses over these years, these employees. So I maintain that my motion honors the loyalty of the Schools for Children to our town. It speaks to fairness, it speaks to loyalty and equity. And you heard, they're looking for another place if they have to. They need some long-term commitment, and it would be a shame for us to lose this school. The time is now, I say, to resolve the matter for the good of our town, because, you know, we've talked before about assets and resources. If we lose this school, we've lost an important asset in more ways than one. And I say we honor their request and negotiate the sale of the school and give them the right of first refusal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Ms. Rice, I have a question. Can you speak to the legal enforceability and legality of this? Because we're now into land use and everything else.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Juliana Rice, Town Council. I was just handed this. I haven't had a chance to consider it at length or to discuss it with the proponent. But the way I see it, there are two ways to apply it, one of which would be illegal, the other of which would actually be harmful to the current tenant. The right of first refusal idea is one in which a price is reached between an owner of a property and a third party. And then the party with the right of first refusal has the opportunity to purchase the property at that price. That is, if we went to the request for proposal, the town reached a deal with a third party, then Schools for Children would have the opportunity, under this amendment, to meet that price. I don't think that's what's intended. I think what's intended is that Schools for Children be allowed to bid on its own, on its own, without having to meet a price of a third party that might be artificially inflated. Under the Uniform Procurement Act, the town, after going through the request for proposal process, may select someone other than the highest bidder. It just has to publish a notice of the reasons it's selecting that bidder. If this amendment were put into place without going through the request for proposal process, that would be illegal. So although I understand the intention, I don't -- I think if it were to be applied, it would actually probably be harmful to the current tenant.
Thank you. Did I have a second on this motion? Okay, thank you. Mr. Sch -- sir.
Dan Dunn, Precinct Twenty-One. Do we have this in writing?
Yep, yes.
Okay, I apologize. When was it passed out?
This evening, I think, this one right there.
Oh, I guess we can get it up here.
It's a minor, small change. That's, we've been allowing those.
Thank you, I just hadn't seen it in writing. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Schlickman?
Who's question?
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate on all matters before the article? Yes. Motion to terminate debate on all matters before the article made by Mr. Schlickman. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
My opinion, it's not two-thirds. Mr. Kaplan, oh, Ms. Kaplan, sorry. Go ahead. You had your hand raised last week? Which one? Who? Yes, Mr. Kaplan had his hand raised, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Bill Kaplan, Precinct Six. I am opposed to the idea of selling the Crosby School. It's an asset to the town, and once we sell it, it's gone. I think there's all these suggestions of limitations we can put on the purchase. I'm not sure any of those are actually enforceable. If we sell to the Crosby School or to the Dearborn Academy for one-point-three million dollars, and six months later, a developer offers them five million dollars, what are we going to do? We're not going to buy it back for five million. I don't know that we're going to litigate to stop that. Dearborn Academy has a responsibility to, you know, themselves, their board, you know, to make the best financial deal they can. The town of Arlington doesn't have that responsibility to Dearborn. So of course Dearborn wants to buy it. One-point-three million is a great price for a large chunk of land that's walking distance to Alewife, steps to two bus lines. I mean, it's, of course, they want to buy it. And I don't really understand, they can't afford to keep renting it if the rent includes the cost of maintenance, but they can afford to buy it and perform all the maintenance? It doesn't really make sense. I mean, obviously, that it would be financially favorable for them to buy the property. Arlington right now is in a financial crisis, and we're about to ask for a giant override. And maybe now is not the time to be making donations to private schools, no matter how worthy they are. We're all free to make a donation to Dearborn Academy there. It's tax deductible. It doesn't mean the town should be doing it. Honestly, I mean, I kind of think we should be finding, you know, finding a way to make more money off the property. At the very least, though, we should be breaking even and holding on to it so that at least we have the option to make money in the future. Selling it now for, you know, not what it's worth, it just seems remarkably irresponsible. I think, you know, if we like Dearborn Academy and we want to keep them in that space because they're good neighbors, we can keep renting it to them for what is really a bargain price. I mean, if our town management is saying that we may not actually be able to afford to rent it out, we're losing money, that's a pretty good deal for the tenant. If we can find a way to break even and continue renting to them, that's still a pretty good deal for them. And at least in ten years, if we need that land or if we want to sell it for top dollar, we could still do that. I guess that's pretty much it. I just feel like this is not the time to be making a major donation to a private institution, no matter how worthy it might be. I urge you to hold on to this property, and, you know, we'll see what the future holds.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Brian Rierig, Precinct Eight. I am generally in favor of the town holding on to its hard assets. We don't know what our needs are going to be in the future, and they are not replaceable. That's generally how I feel. I also feel that this is a special case. I feel that Schools for Children, for all the reasons that you've heard tonight, is a valuable part of the fabric of this community and a valuable economic engine to the community. At one hundred and fifty employees, I believe it's either the third or fourth-largest employer The special circumstances here include the fact that Schools for Children has expressed its fervent desire to buy the building. And the previous speaker rightly raised the question of why a nonprofit like Schools for Children could afford to buy the building and can't afford to lease the building at an equivalent market rate. And I think the reason is fairly straightforward. Having been through this with a couple of nonprofits, it's easier to run a capital campaign to buy something than it is to fund operations year after year after year after year. And so I accept the assertion that Schools for Children can afford to buy the building, and I also accept their assertion that they will be looking for space elsewhere if they're unable to buy the building. And under those circumstances, I think that, which are very different in my mind from the circumstances at the Parmenter School, I support giving Schools for Children and the town the opportunity to come together on a sale that makes sense for the long term. I also, I'm going to disagree with the previous speaker's assertion that if a developer came along a few years from now, that Schools for Children, having bought the building, could, in the face of this, of what's proposed tonight, resell it at a significant profit. If they could find another educational institution to resell it to at a significant profit, well, perhaps that would be the case. But we are looking here at a vote that requires the selectmen to include a deed restriction in any sale that restricts its resale to an educational use. I support Mr. Warden's amendment, which does not change the substance of what the selectmen have proposed, and I'm frankly puzzled by their opposition to his amendment for that reason. All it does is strengthen precisely what they've said they want to say in the deed, and ensure that it is in the deed and that it is for the maximum length of time for which a deed restriction such as this can be recorded in Massachusetts, which is thirty That such a deed restriction can also be re-recorded at the thirty-year point, and its life be extended beyond thirty years. I'm going to suggest, for all the, for some of the reasons you've already heard, that Mr. Berger's motion, while I think well-intentioned, is not effective. A right of first refusal is an appropriate tool to try to control the resale of something, but it's not a tool that's really applicable to the immediate sale, to a transaction between the current owner and a next owner. It really has to do with the next owner and the owner after that, which is why a right of first refusal in favor of the town on a resale is included in the selectmen's vote and would be part of the deed restriction. So I urge a no vote on Mr. Berger's amendment, a yes vote on Mr. Warden's amendment, and a yes vote on the resulting motion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rudeman? Okay, we have another motion, terminate debate on all matters before the article. It's been seconded. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
In my opinion, it is a two-thirds vote. Okay. We have before the now main motion of the selectmen, which was handed out and dated May eleventh. We have Mr. Berger's amendment and Mr. Warden's amendment. First, we're going to vote on Mr. Berger's amendment, then we're going to vote on Mr. Warden, then we're going to vote on the main motion. Okay, all in favor of Mr. Berger's amendment, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
Okay, my opinion, it is defeated. We now have before Mr. Warden's amendment. All in favor of Mr. Warden's amendment, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
In my opinion, it is an affirmative vote. We have now before the main motion of the Board of Selectmen, as amended by Mr. Warden. This requires a two-third vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. In my opinion, that is a two-thirds vote. We don't need that standing. Correct, Juliana? Yep. Well, they're going to stand anyways. Yeah? Yes, exactly. All right, all in favor, please rise. Ms. Mahan, how many down front? Mr. Schlickman, how many to my left?
Twenty-three.
Mr. Trembley, how many in the right center?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Mr. O'Connor?
Thirty.
Thirty in the left center. And Mr. McCabe?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six in the right. All opposed, please rise. Mr. Schlickman?
Thirteen.
Mr. O'Connor?
Eleven.
Eleven. Mr. Trembley?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. And Mr. McCabe?
Five.
It is a total of one hundred twenty-five in the affirmative, forty-four in the negative, and it does pass. I declare Article thirty-nine to be closed. The next article before us is Article forty-nine. Article forty-nine, Mr. Tosti?
Fellow town meeting members, I'd like to propose a substitute motion for the no-action vote of the-- vote of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. Hopefully, you've kept your Town Government Reorganization Committee packet that was handed out a while ago. I would like to propose the submission of the Article 49 vote as stated in the Town Government Reorganization Committee. If people haven't saved that, hopefully, I can read it, too.
Yep, seconded. I'll take it, but I have one. Oh, time.
It's on page 7 of the Town Government Reorganization Report.
Charlie, did you want? Oh, go ahead. I was asking if Mr. Foskett wanted to speak as well. Just you? Did he? Both?
Mr. Moderator, I'd be happy to read it quickly if that's needed.
Yep. I got you, Mr. Foskett. Go ahead. If you want to read it, go ahead.
Okay. Voted that the Town Economic Advisory Committee be in hereby as established said group to be charged with the responsibility consistent with the Town Manager Act and all other applicable laws of making recommendations to town officials, appropriate elected boards and committees, and town meeting regarding national, state, and local economic and financial issues affecting the town of Arlington. The membership of said committee shall consist of the following nine persons: the Town Manager, the Superintendent of Schools, the Director of Assessments, Town Treasurer, Chairman of the Finance Committee, two former Arlington Town officials with executive-level experience, and two residents of the town with private sector executive-level experience to be appointed by the Town Moderator. The names of all appointees shall be forwarded to the Town Clerk's Office by the appointing authority no later than 30 days from the date of adjournment of the 2011 annual town meeting. The Town Moderator shall act as temporary chair with the responsibility of scheduling the date, time, and location of the organization meeting of said group, shall designate a qualified person to serve as secretary to the group. This was the fourth and last recommendation from the Town Government Reorganization Committee. Primarily, we have a lot of commissions and committees and such that look at sort of the next year and look at, you know, the five-year plans and various elements like that, the capital plan. We don't have a group that perhaps looks beyond that, look at the economic situation or changes that might occur which could affect Arlington, maybe not this year, but down the road. And this group would strive to develop some, with relationships with various boards. This group would have no public policy, authority, or power. Its only authority is to make recommendations to the various groups within the town that it feels are relevant. Nothing in this Warren article establishing this group shall be construed as preempting the authority or diminishing the statutory prerogatives of the Board of Selectmen, Town Treasurer, Collector, Clerk, assessors, Town Manager, or the Superintendent of Schools. So that's basically it. It's fairly simple. It's creating a group, receives no pay, that simply meets periodically and tries to look ahead and bring up issues which might not be in the one-year vision of what people are looking now. Therefore, I'd recommend the proposed substitute motion to you and hope you'll give it favorable consideration and be happy to answer any questions. Now, I'm speaking as Chair of the Town Government Reorganization Committee. Remember, I go to the central mic if I'm from the Finance Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Hi, my name is Alan Jones. I'm from Precinct 14. I'm the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, and if that microphone was working, I should probably be standing over there, according to custom, but be that as may. As reported in the Finance Committee report, the Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend no action on Article 49. The committee believes that the objectives of the motion are already met by existing committees, including Vision 2020, the Budget and Revenue Task Force, the Capital Planning Committee, the Long-Term Planning Committee, and to a lesser extent, the Committee on Tourism and Economic Development, the Finance Committee, the Planning Department, the Town Manager, Board of Selectmen, and School Committee. Additional committee, we'd add little value to that, but just take away more time from all the staff and volunteers who already work on all these other committees.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Foskett?
I pass.
Oh, pass. Mr. Jamison?
Move the question.
Okay. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Yeah, you guys who moved the question, got to come up to the mic. Introduce yourself like everybody else. Name, precinct, rank.
My greatest deepest apologies, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. I have a question on all matters before us. Thank you.
Okay, we have motion to terminate debate. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. My opinion, it is a two-thirds vote. We have before the substitute vote of the Town Economic Advisory, what the heck, Town Government Reorganization Committee to set up a committee. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
My opinion, it has a negative vote. We now have before us to recommend a vote of the Board of Selectmen for no action. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. It's recommended no action. My opinion, that closes Article 48. We are now to Article 52, revolving funds. Anyone wish to speak to revolving funds? Someone going to introduce it?
Town Manager, Brian Sullivan. This is a standard annual audit of reauthorizing various revolving funds. I would just point out at the end of the vote, that we just proposed a new revolving fund for the cemetery chapel rental, the chapel located down at our cemetery. We're hoping that we'll be able to gather some rental income from that property in order to make some badly needed maintenance to the facility.
No.
And the expenditures are not to exceed $50,000. We can get that much for all those improvements. Otherwise, it's a standard revolving.
Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12.
Yeah, if you just, yeah. Why don't you just bend that mic down until we get it fixed? Yeah, there we go.
Okay, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. I did discuss this briefly, this article briefly, with the Deputy Town Manager. I wanted to point out a couple of things to the body. These monies total about three-quarters of a million dollars a year in receipts, at least by my count. And on the three biggest items, and on the one that's being added, I had a couple of quick questions if I think maybe the Deputy Town Manager might address those since I had discussed, or Mr. Sullivan, whichever.
Well, put your question to the-
Well, let's start with the life support rescue one.
What's your question?
I have some questions about the utilizations of the funds last year and plans for this year and going forward. So it's my understanding that some of these funds were utilized, I think most appropriately, to cover some of the fire department's costs that were overrun last year. Is that correct?
They are ambulance-related expenses. Is that what you're referring to, the ambulance fund?
Yes. Do we mean related to fire department costs from the previous years when the budget was closed out, which is part of this, because this is last year's ending?
Right, FY-10.
Yes.
Yes, and these are all related to fire department expenses for ambulance service.
Okay, so it did cover some of their deficit?
Yes.
Okay. I note that you have some use in the past and the current going forward towards the capital plan to cover the cost of the rescue, I assume, the equipment?
Yes.
Capital equipment? That's good. I'd like to see more of that. You also, I believe, in the FY-12 budget are covering some costs, some firemen, at least proposed, as based upon the back of the Finance Committee, there's a thing that said two firemen are going to be covered by the ambulance fund, the rescue fund?
That's correct. We're proposing to operate a second ambulance, and those additional staff people will be charged the revolving fund.
Okay, and the expenditures not to exceed will still be fine in the receipts, with those additional receipts that you anticipate?
Yes.
And you're covering the cost of those two employees. Does it cover the cost of their health care insurance and pension costs?
I don't believe in the first year, although we'll certainly make sure it does in the second year.
That would be great. We always like to see things covering the full boat there, so to speak. Thank you on that one. On the Town Hall rental, does that cover capital costs, or is that just sort of like a working capital thing for expenditures who encourage renting this building out to different good purposes?
It covers more maintenance items as opposed to capital improvements, smaller, redoing floors, lighting systems, that type of thing. It helps fund those things.
And those in the library, if we redo rugs and stuff, are part of the capital plan, these are exempt from that use?
Could qualify, whether there's enough in there to cover that large of an item.
Okay. Does it cover employees' costs at all?
Yes, it does.
I was surprised a couple of years to learn that even part-time employees pay into the pension plan, so in the future, similar to my previous comment, it'd be nice if the pension costs were also covered.
Okay.
And last, oh, I'll make a comment so I don't have to get up later. The Recycling Committee volunteered to have its $3,000 taken out of the, one more, Mr. Sullivan. One more, take its $3,000 appropriation taken out of the committee budget, which we'll get to later or after we get back from the override. And that's going to be taken out of the White Goods Recycling Article 35 Fund instead at the discretion of the Director of Public Works, and we think that's a nice way for us to not use as much town funds to continue our good work there, and that's in my respect, my capacity as co-chair of the Recycling Committee. And last question was the same capital-type question on the chapel fund that you're creating here. Would that be a capital fund or just the repair-type thing?
More repair, yeah. We're not going to get enough money to cover any significant improvements to it, so this is more in the nature of repairs.
Okay, obviously, I'm going to vote in favor of this, and I urge the body to do so, and I'm very pleased with the increased utilization of these monies to cover expenses that normally would have come, previously had come out of the general funds, and I urge the manager and his deputy to continue good works in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Warden, Precinct 8. I just have a question. It's on page 26 of the Selectmen's Report. The second item is the library vend. Can you tell us what that means in regular English? Thank you.
I believe that's just a library vending machine and a, yes.
Anybody else wish to speak to the article? Seeing none. We have before us to recommend a vote of the Board of Selectmen to reauthorize revolving funds. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. My opinion, it's unanimous vote. That brings us next to Article 53, CBD, CDGB applications. The Board of Selectmen gave us a nice supplement the other day, May 11th. Ms. McCourt, you going to speak to it?
So you should have had before you the CDBG budget. This is a budget which is controlled by the Board of Selectmen. We ask for your endorsement every year. The committee that determines how these funds will be distributed consists of myself and Mr. Dunn. This is a committee that Jack Hurd sat on with me for many years, and I'm going to take the opportunity to mention how wonderful it was to serve with Jack and what a great job he did of upholding our community's values on this particular piece of work that we did every year. There is one small change to the distribution as you have in your budget, and that is that it was pointed out to us that there is a federal rule that allows us to take what's called program income from any program that is actually earning income and move it into the public services budget, which is otherwise restricted to 15% of the total allocation, that we can take 15% of that program income and add it here. We were able to do that this year, and so we have increased the contribution to Arlington High School Athletic Scholarships. We see this as bridging from this year to next year, when we're hoping that the income they'll be earning from selling advertising will fill in this gap and allow them to cover more scholarships for the students. This is money that the high school students will have to be income-eligible under the HUD program to receive, so we'll see how that goes this year. You would need to add $35,000 therefore to line two AHHS athletic scholarships, moving that from $8,000 to $43,000 and subsequently modifying your subtotals. So there are two sections of this budget that, as I said, are restricted. One is public services, which can only be 15% of the allotment, with that exception I just described, and the other is administrative costs, which is restricted to the amount that you see here. I believe it's 20% of the allocation. Otherwise, we're able to distribute the money between rehabilitation housing and public facilities and improvements as we choose, and these are the choices that we've made this year, and I hope that you will see fit to endorse. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam? Come on.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Ann Fitzgerald, Precinct 17. I am the outgoing Chair of the Council on Aging, who requested me to speak to the reduction that we received this year from the CDBG funds. And we are hoping at some point to address the Selectmen's meeting, to see if we can ask that we have at least $18,000 restored. As you may not be aware, the Dial-A-Ride program and the van program provides frail elder in Arlington with rides to the doctors, to the grocery store, to get their essential business done, and we rely heavily on the CDBG funds to help us. We do have a few other funds, the Sanborn Cancer Fund, which reimburses the COA for the rides provided. For example, if you have a full treatment for cancer, you probably would need, if it was radiation, you would probably need at least 28 rides. So the Sanborn Fund will reimburse the cost to the COA. There are currently over 9,500 seniors residing in Arlington. Many are over 70, and many at 80 have usually been either forced or reluctantly give up their license to drive. So that means that in order to stay independent and to, in some cases, to remain at home, they need the support from the COA. We know that this is, that we cannot change what the Selectmen have already, they've already decided, but we would ask that in future, they could see if there's a possibility of giving us back the funds. We initially asked for $70,000. If you do the math and reduce it by 16.7%, which is what Congress reduced the funds to, it would be $58,300 as opposed to the 4,000, the 40,000, excuse me. So we're just bringing this to your attention and as a Selectman, they hear tonight, but my board did request this, so I am making this request for them as well. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. Almost in teacher mode here because I've sat through so many of these CDBG applications. I'd just like to ask a couple of questions of the Selectmen, just to put it on the record so the meeting has an understanding of where we are and- I'd just like to ask a couple of questions of the Selectmen, just to put it on the record so the meeting has an understanding of where we are and what this is about. Does the town meeting as the legislature of the town have a say in what is appropriate under CDBG?
No.
So basically, in endorsing it, we're basic, the vote before us is, do we want to accept federal money? Is that right?
Well, they're more or less looking for a blessing.
We're looking for your blessing is correct.
And what happens, let's say hypothetically, if we didn't bless it?
I don't know. Ms. Rice, do you know?
Nothing, as far as I know.
It's no consequence? No consequence?
So essentially, we're debating a moot article, aren't we?
Excuse me? No, they come to us as an informative mode to tell us what they're doing.
Right. I feel that as the appropriating body of the town, you should know what we're doing with the money. It sort of fits into the whole financial plan and that the request for endorsement, in my opinion, it matters to me whether or not you're willing to endorse. But, you know, I can't tell you that the effectiveness of that endorsement is different than it is.
So basically, the options before the meeting right now are to either endorse and say, yes, we'd like to have this wonderful federal money, or no, not to endorse it and will still apply for the federal money. With a little less blessing attached to it and maybe a negative consequence the next time that Congress looks to appropriate direction.
Right. And if I were going to be on the Board of Selectmen next year and I was going to be chairing this committee again, I would take seriously your complaints.
Okay, thank you very much. So I urge, I urge a rapid affirmative response is basically the only thing we should do under this article. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Sweeney, Precinct 13. I had a couple of questions about the planning entry in the supplemental report. First question is, are these new positions or is it just a continuation of old positions?
These are the continuation of existing positions.
I see. And every year it's funded from the CB?
CDBG, yes.
I'd just like to point out that it's about 12% of the total. But that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kleiman?
Yeah, that's annoying.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Stuart Kleiman, Precinct 1. To begin, as somebody who has written many federal grants and somebody who sometimes goes to Washington to review federal grant applications, I must say it looks better if we endorse it. If you submit it without our endorsement, well, the feds may say, well, you know, why don't your town meeting, why don't your government endorse the application? That's one point. The other question I have is, do we know, will we receive all of this money? What is the difference between last year and this year in terms of percentage?
Ms. Court?
It was a 16% reduction.
Okay. Now, the word on the street, because I actually get some CDBG money now, is that there's a 22% cut. Now, I didn't know, because things are really weird in Washington. Do we know?
No, I believe it was a 16 or 16 and a half percent cut. There was some supplemental CDBG funds under the Stimulus Act that we are also not getting, and perhaps that's where the 22% number comes from. But that was like totally separate and spent separately and not to be repeated.
Okay. Well, thanks. And to be honest, I really wouldn't change anything. We're in kind of very strange times here, and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LaCourte, you are next on the list. If you still want to be.
Yes. I just wanted to respond to Ms. Fitzgerald's concerns. We know that we have shorted the transportation program a little bit. There's some flux in that account right now. We're not really sure how the billing is working. But the town manager has set aside $30,000 in reserve funds for us to tap if we need it to support those programs over the course of this fiscal year. Did I get that correct, Mr. Sullivan? It's in the Finance Committee Reserve Fund. So we will ensure that those funds are available for our senior citizens who need them.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn?
Pass.
Pass. Mr. Deist?
Pass.
Mr. Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Warden, Precinct 8. I had a question for, I guess, to you, to Ms. LaCourte. I didn't see where the $35,000 was coming out of. Or did I miss it?
We had program income in the Arlington Home Improvement Loan Program. And we are allowed to take 15% of that program income and move it into public services, which is what we did. There was about...
So it's not out of this year's appropriation?
It's not out of this year's appropriation. It's out of accumulated funds in that program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other point, and this is somewhat ancient history, but I remember an evening in this hall when Ms. Mahan, when she was not in the exalted role she now holds, but was just a town meeting member like the rest of us, was very concerned that the Selectmen had chopped out of the appropriation a program for deletting some units at one of the Housing Authority projects. Maybe Ms. Mahan will remember it better than I. And she got up here and proposed an amendment that we take some money from somewhere in this program and put it into that deletting program. And it was approved by this meeting. So I just wonder if we, perhaps we don't have a little leverage there. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm not sure how that would have worked, but, okay.
Thank you. Ms. Fiori?
I'll say Fiori, Precinct 2. In the early days when we got CDBG money, if I have the order correct, we used to meet with our former planning director, Mr. McLennan, and he would invite people to sit and go over the different departments and things that were going to be receiving money, and people would make comments and so forth. But it seems to me now that it sounds like there's only two people doing this, and it's certainly a lot of work. And I'm not one of those that would be able to sit that long, I don't think. So my question simply is if the public, you know, members of the town meeting, for instance, wanted to sit in on these discussions and offer any suggestions, is that possible? I know you advertised the hearing, so I see those. And I know that, you know, I see in the paper when it comes in. But I would like to know if it would be published if people could sit in on it. Thank you.
Ms. LaCourte?
I believe at the public hearing that we hold on the applications and also on, during the discussion that we have about how the programs have worked over the course of a year, that that's the appropriate point for input from the public. Because we are allotting these funds based on applications that we get, okay? So we, first of all, can only consider the applications we've received. And those applications have to meet certain criteria with regards to the federal requirements. And so if we deem that something meets those federal requirements and that their application is correct, then that goes on a list for consideration. And so that's, we start by being limited by those applications. But it's at the public hearing point that input would be what would be useful to us, because that's when we have the full board to consider it. I mean, it's not like the subcommittee doesn't take direction from the rest of the board and doesn't listen to that public hearing as the starting point for our decision-making process. It's really just that then we're kind of dickering amongst all of those applications we've received to try to decide, you know, can a program survive if we don't give them their full request? Will they still be able to make use of those funds? You know, is there some new requests? Do we think it has merit? Is it worth funding some other program we've been supporting for years a little bit less? Those kinds of decisions we tend to do in the subcommittee. So does that help? You're welcome.
Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Carl Wagner, Precinct 11. I move the previous question and all associated matters.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Motion to terminate debate. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? That's two-thirds vote. We have before us a recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen for endorsement of the CDBG application. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. That exposes of the article. We have now before us Article 54, Collective Bargaining. FinCom will report. Mr. Tosti?
I guess I lied before when I said I'd go to the central mic as Chair of the FinCom. From now on, we're pretty much into the Finance Committee report. And at this point, I would usually give up, get up and give a long spiel, taking a few pieces from the Chairman's Report and a few of the charts in the back. But I don't think I'll do that. I think you've read my Chairman's Report. Hopefully, you see the things that are going on. You've looked at the five-year plan in the back, the cuts that are listed, at least on the town side. And again, you've seen the listing of all the members of the Finance Committee who've worked very hard over the last several months and are still working hard to get the rest of the information for you. So if you have questions, see me at the break or give me a call. Number's in the book. On Article 54, what I would like to do, in some of these, I'll get up and just say a couple of words, and others, if you don't have any questions, I won't bother. A few of the articles I will table or move to postpone, because they're either small things, we can get them out of the way. They're not going to change whether there's an override or non-override. And I think we can get a large percentage of the rest of these articles done and adjourn until June 8th, after the override. Of course, the final decision is up to you. On Article 54, I would like to move to table this article. The manager is in the process of negotiations. You've heard of the breakthrough contract that we've gotten with the teachers, which of course won't come before you. And the manager is now working with the other unions. So I think with a little luck, hopefully, by the time we come back on the 8th, he will have some collective bargaining contracts for you to review. So I move to table Article 54.
It's been seconded. All in favor of tabling Article 54, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It is tabled. That brings us to Article 55, Position Reclassification. We have before us a recommended vote of the FinCom. Any questions? Anyone like to speak to position reclassifications? Seeing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. Unanimous vote, and I so declare it. That brings us, the article is closed. That brings us to Article 56, Budgets. Why don't I just say table?
A couple of weeks ago, I put forth, to get opinions from various town officials, the moderators, managers, superintendent, various other people. And I put forth three proposals. I got back about eight different responses. So what I would like to do is move to postpone the town budgets until June 8th, after the override. More and more, I've become convinced that if we vote this now, we're going to basically be doing the same debate twice. So therefore, I move to postpone till June 8th.
Okay. All in favor of postponing till June 8th, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. It is postponed to June 8th. 56, postpone to 68. Okay, that brings us to Article 57, we already voted on. That brings us to Article 58.
Article 58 is a no action because we have already taken action on this same article at the special town meeting.
All in favor of recommended vote of no action, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. Unanimous vote for no action. If you can have such a thing, that closes the article. We're on to Number 59. Appropriations financing construction or reconstruction of sore and sore-riddled facilities. We have before us a recommended vote of the Finance Committee. Anyone wish to discuss this article? Okay. This requires two-thirds because we're borrowing money. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Ms. Lucarelli, 85 town meeting members present and voting? Yes. Thank you. 59, unanimous. That brings us to Article 60, Appropriation finance of construction or reconstruction of water mains and water facilities. Anyone wish to discuss this article? No one. Okay, again, borrowing. All in favor, please, of the article, recommended vote of the FinCom, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare. Ms. Lucarelli, 85 town meeting members present and voting? Yes. Okay, thank you. That brings us to Article 62. We already did 60, that was minutemen. We have before us a recommended vote of the FinCom, appropriation for committees and commissions. They want to give $14,760 to all these various folks. Anyone wish to discuss this? Seeing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, that's a majority vote. We have before us Article 63, Recommended Vote for Celebrations, $10,167 to the various parades and celebrations. Anyone wish to discuss this? Seeing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. Majority vote. We have before us Article 64, Appropriation Miscellaneous. Some $11,040 appropriated for legal offense, out-of-state travel, indemnification of medical costs. Anyone wish to discuss this article? Seeing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No.
It's a majority vote, and I so declare it. That closes the article. Article 65. We have before us a recommended vote of no action? Oops. All in favor of no action, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? No action on Article 65. Article 66, Recommended Water Bodies. They want to do $20,000 for the water bodies. Anyone wish to discuss this, treating, maintaining, and oversight of our ponds and rivers? Okay, no one wants to discuss it. All in favor of the recommended vote of the FinCom, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed, say no. Unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 67, Appropriations for Adjustment of Former 25-Year Accidental Disability Employees. We have before us a recommended vote of the FinCom for the sum of $0. Okay. Anyone wish to discuss this? No one. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous vote. We have before us Article 68.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to postpone this article until June 8th. If the override is successful or other sums of money might became available, we might want to amend this. We'll have a better idea over the next couple of weeks. Therefore, I move to postpone till June 8th.
Okay, we have, we're going to post, we have a motion to postpone Article 58 to June 8th, and it's been seconded? 68. 68. Article 68, 68 to 68. Cool. All right, all in favor of postponing, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed? It is postponed. Postpone 69. We have recommended vote of no action. All in favor, no action?
Mr. Moderator?
Sir?
I would like to move to postpone this until June 8th. As you could, as the town meeting could see, part of the, our deliberations was based on the fact that, you know, there was no CO raises being given town employees. And so the Finance Committee would like the opportunity to revisit this. We might keep it the same because even with the contracts that could be in place, there would still be no COs for fiscal 2010 and fiscal 2011. But we want the opportunity to revisit in light of the contracts that have been negotiated and could be negotiated. So therefore, I move to postpone till 68.
Motion to postpone Article 69 to June 8th. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. It's postponed. Article 70, Acceptance... Article 70, acceptance of legislation to increase or increase of survivors' benefits. We have before us a recommended vote of the FinCom. Anyone wish to discuss this article? Seeing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous vote. Disposes of the article. We have now before us Article 71, local option taxes. We have a recommended vote of no action. Anyone wish to discuss it? None. All in favor of no action, please say yes.
Yes!
We have before us now Article 72. Well, no one wants to vote against it. It's no action. All right, who doesn't want to take no action? No one. It's unanimous vote, no action. Article 72, we have a force appropriation for tip fee stabilization. Recommended vote of $450,000 being hereby appropriated from the tip fee stabilization fund. Anyone wish to discuss tip fee stabilization? Seeing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Ms. Rainville is, Ms. Rainville, I'm sorry. Ms. Lucarelli, 85 members present and voting? 73, transfer of some cemetery funds. Anyone wish to discuss cemetery fund transfer? Seeing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Ms. Lucarelli, 85 members present and voting? Thank you. She said yes. Number 74, appropriation overlay reserve fund, some $200,000 being hereby appropriated to the overlay reserve surplus account. Anyone wish to discuss overlay funds? Seeing none. All in favor of recommended vote, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed? It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Ms. Lucarelli, 85 members present and voting? Yes. She answers in the affirmative. That disposes of Article 74. Article 75, appropriation to stabilize...
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move to postpone this till June 8th. Obviously, if the override is successful and passes, we will need this article to put money from that override into the stabilization fund, as we did with the 2005 override, and then they'll be built up and then drawn down. So I move to postpone till June 8th.
All in favor of postponing it to June 8th, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No.
Okay, it is postponed to June 8th. That brings us to free cash, my favorite. Some of 385,249 dollars be used to determine the tax rate. Do you want to change this one, Mr. Tosti? We are good. Anyone wish to discuss free cash? No one. All in favor, please, of the recommended vote of Finance Committee, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No.
It is a majority vote. And if my calculations are right, hold on. Everything else has been postponed or tabled. Mr. Warden? Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Warden, Precinct 8. It strikes me that we're about done as far as we can go.
Correct.
But we moved, we voted earlier in the evening to adjourn until next Wednesday.
Wednesday, we're going to have to change that.
We need to reconsider that vote unless we don't want to come back next Wednesday for nothing, I guess.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Rowe, can you get up and make a motion to reconsider our vote on the lines of Mr. Warden's recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting is set forth, and the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Wednesday, June 8th, 2011, at 8:00 p.m.
Okay, I'm going to treat that as a motion for reconsideration of our earlier vote and put that in there. So all in favor of adjourned to June 8th, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. We are adjourned to June 8th. Are there any notices of reconsideration? Mr. Schlickman?